Okay, it is seven o'clock on Thursday, November 5th, and I am calling the sixth regular meeting of the 107th year of the PV Governing Board to order. Before we start, I just want to let anyone who may be observing at home that we realize that we are having some technical difficulties with our live stream. Hopefully, they will resolve, but if they do not do, everyone should be aware that the video will be posted soon after the meeting, so in its entirety. So with that, Mrs. Schwartz, could you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have roll call, please?
Dr. Skidmore?
Here.
Mrs. Matura?
Here.
Mrs. Greenberg?
Here.
Mrs. Case?
Here.
Mrs. Bacon?
Here.
Thank you. Approval of agenda. Dr. Welsh?
Thank you, President Greenberg. Item is approved by consent, will not come up for discussion during the meeting, but will be approved when the agenda is adopted. This is possible since members of the Governing Board receive the agenda along with backup materials at least 24 hours prior to the meeting and have time to review and consider all items. Prior to the agenda being adopted, members of the Governing Board or audience may ask that an item be removed from the consent agenda and brought to the floor for discussion at the appropriate place on the agenda. I would like to offer the agenda as posted.
Thank you very much. Does any member of the board wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Any member of the audience? Seeing none, Mrs. Case, may I have a motion? So, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Governing Board's statements. Let's see anybody jumping up. Dr. Skidmore?
Thank you, President Greenberg, and I am here and very delighted to congratulate Mrs. Greenberg, Mrs. Case, on your return to the board. And I'm very pleased to welcome Stephanie Brown as the newest member to the school board in January. Mrs. Brown brings a long list of experience to this board. She did her time as president of United Parent Council, and that's probably much more difficult than sitting here at the dais. And then finally, I have one request from Mrs. Felton, and I know that you don't know the answer to this yet. But we did have three board candidates who followed the standard operating procedure of running for election to the school board. With the entrance of a fourth write-in candidate, that forced an election, which cost the Paradise Valley School District money. And I know that you probably, because of the great turnout, you don't know what our share is as of yet, but I might estimate that that would be an additional $100,000. So when you know that number, will you please let the board know? Thank you.
Mrs. Case?
I also want to congratulate Mrs. Greenberg and Mrs. Case and welcome Mrs. Brown to the board. We are blessed to have people who really understand the district and know the district well, serve and be candidates, so I want to thank all of you for your commitment. But Mrs. Brown, thank you for demonstrating your commitment to the students in Paradise Valley.
Welcome, Stephanie. Congratulations, condolences, and all the rest. And congratulations, Ann. I had a letter which I received, and I believe perhaps other school board members did also, but it was, this one was addressed to just me. And I wanted to read it so that teachers would understand that I'm hearing you. So, "Dear Mrs. Case, I have worked in the district for 29 years. In those years, I have never written a letter to the board. I'm writing today to share my frustrations of the current situation. I really realize these are unprecedented times. However, things need to change for the sake of your teachers. I have always loved working in the district, and now I look around and everyone is, I know, is stressed and wants to quit. These are hardworking and dedicated teachers that would do anything for their students, but it is too much. To ask of us to keep our in-person kids safe, happy, and learning while wearing masks, cleaning all the time, and social distancing is bad enough. When you add the virtual students to our plates, you have set us up for failure. We can't be all things to all people. I can't give 100% of myself to any group of students, and that is not a good learning environment. I have always strived to do what is best for students and never minded putting in the extra work. To expect teachers to do dual teaching in the middle of a pandemic is not fair. Unless you are in our situation every day, you have no idea what we are going through. We were expected to change our way of teaching in a short amount of time while not giving us the technology to do it or the help to set it up. Every day is a new problem that has to be solved on the fly. I listened to the various board meetings and felt the teachers' voices were not heard. This is the greatest district, but I'm afraid if we continue down this path, you will lose amazing teachers, not because they don't like their jobs, but they can't handle the mental and physical stress we are enduring. I hope the board will look for a solution to these issues." That being read, we had a study session earlier today, and we talked about a lot of ideas. And we talked, we, there was a survey that went out to the teachers, and we have been listening to your input. I want to stress to the teachers, we are listening. And we are desperately trying to make the needed changes now, not later, but as quickly as we can to give you hope and to help you. And we are trying to think outside of the box. I was speaking to Susie Seep a few weeks ago, talking about thinking outside the box. I mentioned to Dr. Skidmore that she didn't even know there was a box. And so with that, I'm grateful that we have so many ideas coming that are outside the box and that there was never a box to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Case. I'd also like to extend my congratulations to you and to Mrs. Brown, looking forward to your joining the board, and thank the voters of Paradise Valley for their continued support. As well, I'd like to thank, although obviously things still need to be certified, the voters of the state of Arizona, who have apparently also passed Proposition 208, which will provide very needed funding for our district and all schools, all public schools across this state. So I, I am extraordinarily grateful that, that the voters have supported public education in that way. Next on the agenda is awards and recognitions. And first on the agenda is Dr. Welsh.
Thank you, President Greenberg. And before I turn it over to Ms. Anderson, I do have a special award I would like to present this evening. And I'm sure if the individual in question knew about it ahead of time, there might be more protest. But, so Dr. Skidmore has provided her insight, wisdom, and wit as a member of our Governing Board for five terms, if I'm not mistaken. And she has always kept the best interests of all students, our teachers, our parents, and staff forefront in her decisions. I also want to say that when she hears of an unmet need, she is that kind of individual who, without any fanfare or any to-do about it, quietly makes sure that that need is met. And so, without any other pomp and circumstance, I would like to present this distinguished superintendent's, Superintendent's Distinguished Service Award to Dr. Skidmore in appreciation and recognition of her many years of service and advocacy for the students at PV schools, which I know doesn't end with her time on the board. So, thank you, Dr. Skidmore.
Now, in my true spirit of giving, since it is the Thanksgiving season, it seems to me that we could grind down this glass and we could re-gift this. So the first person that offers me 500 bucks at the door to dedicate to the PV Schools Foundation, I'll be more than glad to gift it. Thank you very much.
That's why I didn't get flowers, because I knew you didn't want to grind those either. All right. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Anderson for our other awards and recognitions this evening.
Good evening, President Greenberg, Governing Board members, Dr. Welsh, members of Cabinet and attendees, both in-person and virtual. We have one employee recognition to share with you this evening. Our honoree unfortunately is unable to be with us tonight, but I'm told she is virtually attending. She is the recipient of the Paradise Valley Education Association's Recognition of Professional Standards Award for Teachers. The honoree will be introduced by Ms. Susie Seep, PVEA president.
Thank you. President Greenberg, Dr. Welsh, Governing Board. I would first like to say, I too am so glad that Dr. Skidmore got recognized tonight. And anyone who watched the study session will know that Dr. Skidmore is not puttering in to the close on fumes. She came today shot out of a cannon, and I could not be more grateful for all of your service and all of your years. Tonight, please join me in celebrating Amber Strang. She's a math teacher at Horizon High School. She was nominated by her colleague Linda Nelson, and I couldn't be prouder. This nomination was so great, it came in over the summer, but I had to tell everyone, even though we all agree this is our favorite, I can't give the first props to my colleague Amber from Horizon. I made them wait. But Amber is the math IDL at Horizon and the secondary math curriculum specialist for the district. She's taught 21 years, all at Horizon. In addition to teaching seniors in dual enrollment math, Amber is in charge of freshman activities at Horizon, which includes organizing the future Husky visits in January for our feeder middles. And she plans and runs Husky 101, our freshman camp every July. It's something that she came up with on her own as a fun way to bring freshmen in and introduce them to the campus, and it's something that other campuses have borrowed all around the city. As someone who's watched Amber do this work for years, I can tell you she's as tireless as she sounds, especially when you know that she has two active sons, both proud PVUSD kiddos. Austin graduated from Horizon in 2015, and Jack is an eighth grader at Desert Shadows Middle. Linda Nelson wrote, "Amber took on the role as math IDL in the last couple of years. It has been awesome. Amber is very positive and upbeat, and that makes coming to work a great experience. She not only provides us with information from her meetings, and she goes above and beyond in every other way. She emails us asking if we need anything. She asks us if we are okay. She's there for moral support. She's there to talk things out and help through tough situations and always there to help us in any way. During our math department meetings, she has a well-thought-out and organized agenda. We go through every item, and she asks us our opinion, the best sign of a good leader. She always listens, takes notes, and makes sure she finds out anything that we may ask. During math meetings, she checks with each one of us to see if we need anything. Since COVID, she checks on us a lot more. She's also learned so much technology that she's our go-to in the department for help on Google Meets and Google Classroom. She's taught us so much right now. Not only does she provide us with information from administration, she taught a class for our professional development for the whole district. She's taken on the job of high school curriculum specialist. If there's ever anything she needs, or we need, she contacts IT or administration or anyone and works on getting it for us. She provides us with any kind of support we need. Even though she wears so many hats, she's always here for us. She makes us feel as if each and every one of us is important. At the beginning of the year, she gives us little bags with some candy, a supply we always need, and a note personalized to tell us how much she appreciates us. She shows us that she cares, that she, and she exemplifies not only a high school teacher, but a mentor, a coworker, a person with high standards, and a great leader. She has made my experience the last few years a very positive one. As is the case these days, it's really wonderful to have something positive to think about, and I couldn't be prouder to be Amber's colleague. Thank you.
Congratulations to our well-deserved recipient, and that concludes our awards this evening.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is call to the public, and we have a few cards. And I'm just gonna call on folks alphabetically. And just as a reminder, the board is not allowed to, these are items not on the agenda, and so we're not allowed to address the discussion. Individuals have three minutes, and folks who are representing organizations have five. And the first person on our agenda is Linda Naranjo. And I apologize if I mispronounced.
Good evening. I just want to thank you for allowing me to speak to you guys today. We, as parents, received a very discouraging email today. And there's a lot of parents just like me, so I'm representing quite a few of us that couldn't make it tonight. We're not very happy with the email that we received. Paradise Valley School District refuses to align itself with the Arizona Health Department COVID guidelines and instead has once again created their own metrics that are much stricter. Arizona Health Department has stated that all three metrics must be in red for a school shutdown. We have zero in red. We have two that are in yellow. So we don't understand why Paradise Valley is even discussing a shutdown right now. Do the board members or Superintendent Welsh claim to know more than the Arizona Department of Health or doctors? Where would we be if every business shut down with the slightest metric increase? Our children haven't even been in school for a month. How many more students are you willing to lose to another shutdown? How can you possibly justify another shutdown when the numbers are so low? The school my children attend have one case, and it's a distance learner that's tested positive. I urge you to put our children first and keep the schools open. Thank you.
Our next card is Susie Seep.
Thank you again, President Greenberg, Superintendent Welsh, Governing Board. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I also appreciate the opportunity that we received today at the study session to illustrate some of what teachers have been feeling. There are just certain things that I wanted to get on the record for this evening that I think are important considerations for all of us moving forward. The most important thing I want to remind you is that teachers want nothing more than to give their students 100%. You already heard Mrs. Case read a letter tonight about how inadequate teachers feel because they can't meet the needs of their students. We know that teachers will always keep trying to do the best they can. At a certain point, it becomes incumbent on the leadership to stop adding responsibilities to their plates and to look for ways to remove them. One I, one thing that has been an ongoing conversation that has been very difficult to resolve is the number of teachers and related services specialists who are not apparently trusted to do their jobs virtually from home, even though they don't have safe workplaces. We've spread out so much over our especially elementary campuses that we've taken away the spaces that our related services specialists would use to work with students. Now, they have to work with students virtually, but because they're sharing tiny spaces, and many times, they can't take their masks off. Well, speech-language pathologists can't do speech-language pathology while they wear a mask online with students at home. So they're doing that work from their cars, from the lobby, or from outside the gym if they can get a little Wi-Fi signal there. They're about to lose their home at Roadrunner, and there's no answer about, about where they're gonna go. But yet, even though they bill nearly all of their minutes and nearly everything is scheduled, they're not allowed to work virtually, but no one has an answer why. We have teachers begging to be allowed to focus on their in-person students. We have teachers desperate to go back to work, but their doctors won't allow them. Please consider bringing these people back to work under PV Connect to work with students assigned to their old classrooms, their old grade levels, or even their sites. We had the budget for them before. I believe we can afford to pay some of them now. I am really afraid to even contemplate what emergency it is that we're saving for if it isn't this. Our self-contained students, their teachers, their ESPs are the most vulnerable. They're also the smallest number. We should work harder to figure out ways to keep them from being, from having to do both. Teachers are willing to teach either one in nearly every case. I know that parents want everything for their kids, and I appreciate that. But parents need to be asked to do what all of us need to be asked to do right now. First prioritize, then choose. No one gets what they want right now. Five-year-olds can't have their birthday parties. Seniors didn't get prom. Many grandparents haven't seen their children since their shoes were two sizes smaller. We've missed weddings, funerals, all sorts of moments, big and small. Some parents have chosen to prioritize safety from COVID. Some, even though they worry, have prioritized their kids' social-emotional needs and sent them to school. Some are worried at all about COVID, but they're worried about their kids' learning. The district should be asking each of these people to prioritize and choose. They shouldn't be able to get everything they want just because they want it. We are the experts on education, and we aren't acting like it. I've been to the dentist, and I don't even like any of the things they do. But I tell you what, I don't tell them what to do. I would never presume to do that, and I am tired of other people presuming to tell us. I rely on my dentist's expertise. We must insist that the community rely on our expertise now. My expertise is in teaching economics. We are not the product. We are a public good. We're funded by taxpayers, not parents. We work for the community. We work for society, not parents. They count on us to take care of their kids. Let's do it.
The next card is Melissa Topol.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Topol, and what I'm about to say is 100% my own words and thoughts and should be clearly seen as such. Many of you sitting here before me know me personally. I've collected signatures for you, and I've proudly displayed your yard signs. Others, I've taught your children, or I've sat on committees with you. One of you even saved me from quitting many years ago, although you probably never knew it at the time. I've dedicated 15 years of my life to this district, and I used to proudly tell anyone where I work. At the beginning of this school year, I reassured fellow employees that Cabinet and Governing Board members were working with all stakeholder groups to come up with solutions. "We're tough cookies. Pull up your big girl, your big boy pants," I said. They stepped up for us for Red for Ed, and we need to trust them. The night that you guys said that we would start distance learning at the beginning of this year, I cried. "See?" I told everybody yesterday, the next day. I said that everyone's health and well-being, they had in mind. They get it. They trust us. And then you changed the metrics. Still, I gently remind everyone, reminded everyone, your decision was logical. We are living in unprecedented times. Don't worry. The Governing Board is listening to all stakeholders. They'll come up with something. Besides, we all knew we'd have to return to our sites at some point. And then you said teachers would teach in both modalities simultaneously. No way, I thought. They can't make us do both at the same time. It's a clear violation of Section 3D of our contracts. But here we are. Teachers are doing both without being duly compensated. But the last straw, the one that made me lose faith and made me feel like a number, was what happened at the 1022 Governing Board meeting. A fellow teacher informed you what her day was like, and while I know you can't say anything but thank you, the next item you did was sing "Happy Birthday." Those actions right there prove to me how out of touch you are and how fake those words "Welcome to Paradise" really are. This Husky is dog-tired. Every single employee in this district is exhausted. We're tired of making your promises to the public being kept. Actions speak louder than words, and your actions as of late Governing Board and Cabinet do not meet the social-emotional needs of your employees. I'm done with shiny stickers and words of affirmation. They don't make my job easier. They don't pay my bills. And I'm done with the hollow promises. Employees are dying in other districts. Is that what it's gonna take for all of you to listen? I really, really, really hope not. And if you want to show your compassion, if you want to earn my trust back, stop telling us that there's nothing that you can do, that it's lack of state funding or whatever other excuse, valid or not. Your hands aren't tied. Your employees have shown you that anything, anything is possible. And it's time that you guys stepped up to the plate and returned the favor. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a card from Jessica Wani.
Good evening, Dr. Welsh, President Greenberg, Governing Board members, Cabinet, PV community at home, and those here in person. My name is Jessica Wani. I'm this year's United Parent Council president. I have two children who attend PV. One's in elementary school and one is in middle school. And tonight, I just wanted to give a little bit of history and perspective about UPC and share a message with families across the district. UPC has been advocating for students for over 30 years. I see many faces here who have been part of the history of UPC. And PV has a long history of parent advocates and a legacy of parent leadership rising to help steer the district during difficult and tough times. Many are now learning about UPC as we make our way as a community through this pandemic. And our exec team at UPC is thrilled to have increased participation at our meetings and to have new UPC reps and community members joining the conversation. So here's a little bit more about PV's United Parent Council. UPC is a district-wide parent group dedicated to giving parents a voice and advocating for students. Our goal is to have UPC reps at every PV school throughout the district. And today, I'm proud to say, we have 72 UPC reps across 30 schools and 15 community members. UPC's motto is, "We educate, advocate, and collaborate. We help bring the parent perspective into the district decision-making process with equity for all PV students at the forefront of our advocacy. We hold monthly meetings open to the public, and we provide educational programming throughout the school year. UPC reps come from all backgrounds. We represent diverse interests and perspectives, and though we have our differences, it is what we have in common that drives our purpose and our advocacy. And there is so much more that unites us than divides us. We all want our kids in school, and we all want them to succeed. While we may disagree about what path we should take to succeed, we share that common goal, and I think it's report, very important to remember that during these crazy times. PV families across the district also have a lot in common. We all want to matter. We all want to be heard, and we all want to be seen." We all want to be heard and we all want to be seen. So UPC has a message for families across the district. We see you. We hear you. Your words matter. Whether you're attending school in person, learning from home on PV Connect or PV Online, UPC aims to speak to our families' collective needs and share your perspective and your feedback. The last few months have been difficult for everyone. Teachers, as we've heard, and kids and parents. Governing boards, superintendents, admin teachers, and staff across Arizona have searched for solutions to safely educate all students during an unprecedented public health crisis. There is no perfect solution. There's no playbook. There's no instruction manual to navigate these times. Thankfully, MPV leadership is committed to remaining flexible and responsive to meet the needs of both staff and students by providing a safe, equitable learning environment for all. And that's including teachers, staff, and students. On the heels of a very divisive and contentious national election, I'll remind you about that in case we all have forgotten in the last few minutes. I hope we can all remember what unites us as Americans and as a community. And there's nothing more American than public schools. Nothing more American than caring about our neighbors and caring about our community. I hope that in the weeks and months to come, we can come together and remember our common goals. Remember that we are a living example to our children and how to cope and deal with challenging times. That civility, inclusion, respect, compromise, and empathy are valuable qualities to show our children. We are all teachers right now during this great life lesson that none of us have any control over. So let's channel what unites us and through our common purpose rise above the polarization. There are no in-person families. There's no stay-at-home families. We are only PV families. So my hope is we'll move together as a community, do what we have to do to keep COVID cases down because there is a responsibility there. And parents, I'm talking to you. I know it's hard and I know we're exhausted, but we need to work together to keep our schools safe and to keep our schools open. To support teachers and staff, this will take every one of our PV families. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Dr. Welsh, Superintendent's comments.
Thank you, President Greenberg. As was mentioned a bit earlier tonight, I would also like to congratulate Ms. Greenberg, Ms. Case, and of course, our newest board member, Ms. Stephanie Brown, who were elected and re-elected to the board. Congratulations. And then of course, we get to have your official swearing-in come our January 7th meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that November is our National Native American Heritage Month, which pays tribute to the ancestry and traditions of our Native Americans and Alaska natives. Here in PV schools, we have 245 students who are registered Native Americans. And I'd also like to acknowledge the work that our Native American liaison, James Fabian, does to engage and involve our Native American students and our families. Also, this next week is National School Psychology Week and the theme is "The Power of Possibility." The week highlights the important work that our school psychologists and other educators do to help all students thrive. And I would like to recognize the work that our school psychologists do, especially in these difficult times, to help all of our students through the pandemic. I'd also like to share that part of the middle school and high school experience for students is having the opportunity to select electives that peak their interests. And with so many electives to choose from and so many great programs at all of our schools, we've made it even easier for families to make decisions with a new web tool that we've launched that's based upon students' interests. You can take the Signature Program Quiz for our middle school or high school at pvschools.net. I'd also like to remind all of our families of high school seniors who are planning for college that applications for the free application for federal student aid, or the FAFSA, as we all call it, opened on October 1st. This gives our students access to all kinds of federal aid regardless of family income or grades. There's no cost to families to complete that. And I would encourage families, if they have questions, to please talk to your high school counselors or visit studentaid.gov for more information. I will be providing a COVID-19 update later on tonight's agenda, which will include some details regarding some of what we discussed earlier in the study session and some of the input we had there. I would like to turn it over briefly to Dr. Bales for introduction to one of our newer administrators who were unable to make our previous meeting, Dr. Bales.
Thank you, Dr. Welsh, President Greenberg, Cabinet, Governing Board, and guests. Tonight, we present the last of our masked administrators. Joining the Pinnacle Pioneer Team as Assistant Principal, please welcome Kim Coda. Is joined with her fiance, Drew. Thank you for supporting her as well.
Thank you, Dr. Welsh.
All right. Thank you. That concludes my comments as well.
Thank you very much, everyone, and welcome, Kim. Next on the agenda is American Education Week Proclamation. So I'd like to read the proclamation, then ask for motion to approve our declaration of such. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas education employees, be they teachers, custodians, bus drivers, or librarians, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas schools are community linchpins, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise. Now, therefore, I am Ms. Ann Greenberg, serving as Governing Board President of the Paradise Valley Unified School District, declared November 16 through 2020 as the 99th Annual Observance of American Education Week. Mrs. Case, may I have a motion? Some moved. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is ratification of vouchers. May I have a motion, Mrs. Case?
Some moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Greenberg, I abstain.
Thank you, Mrs. Bacon. Motion passes. Four to zero. Last on the items for approval is gifts and donations. As always, we thank all of our donors, but I would like to particularly note and thank Joanne Buttershall, who donated $5,000 to Campabella Elementary for school use. The PTO at Explorer, who donated $7,500 to the school for security cameras. The Husky Cross Country Boosters, who donated just under $2,500 for track and field. Delbert M. Rounds, who donated $4,000 to Pinnacle High School Athletic Department. And the Quail Run PTA, who donated $20,000 to Quail Run for library and media center shelves. Again, thanks to all of our donors. It is especially heartening that you provide your support during these trying times. And Mrs. Case may have a motion to approve the report.
Some moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next on our agenda are items for discussion and the first up is our COVID-19 update. We do have a card, so I don't know, Melissa, do you want to address first or do you want to have us get into the conversation? Okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you, President Greenberg. For my COVID-19 update this evening, I have a few items. One, I just want to mention that today's update of COVID-19 data from Maricopa County did show that cases are continuing to rise within the district and are quickly approaching our established criteria for returning to online learning. Our cases per 100,000 persons increased from 62.62 to 78.84 and our percent positivity increased from 4.57 to 5.36. Both indicators are now in the yellow and cases per 100,000 persons are quickly approaching the red. As noted earlier in today's communication to families, we reminded them to please make sure to make safe, smart choices to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19. We will continue to monitor these trends and communicate to families should we exceed 100 cases per 100,000 persons or 10% positivity, which would trigger a return, which will trigger, pardon me, a return to online learning. Given the current trend, it does appear quite possible that that criteria could be met either next Thursday, the 12th, or next, the following Thursday, the 19th. If so, in consultation with local public health agencies, we will communicate out to families the timeline for our return to online learning in accordance with our governing board-approved health criteria. Along those lines, with its most recent October 29th revisions, the Arizona Department of Health Services is recommending that if a county or district has one benchmark in the red category for two or more weeks, even if they are different benchmarks, schools should consult with their local health department to determine whether to prepare to transition back to virtual learning with onsite support services. That updated guidance is available on the Maricopa County School Dashboard, which we have linked to on our website at pvschools.net/reopening. In preparation, along those lines, Dr. Van Acton met us last week with some of our directors to talk about the potential need to return to online learning. Our assistant superintendents are working with our departments to develop internal plans to outline those next steps and actions to be taken should a closure be triggered. This includes considerations such as onsite support, targeted support for our special education students, food service, transportation, and technology distribution, among others. I'd also like to share that based upon the updated guidance from the CDC defining sustained contact, which is now based upon cumulative minutes of contact, not necessarily constant minutes, and updated guidance we received from Maricopa County, we have updated our standing operating procedures accordingly and we shared them with employees this week. Finally, as we talked about in our study session, we've been working on potential alternatives and revisions to the current instructional model. Following a formal committee call process, our work team met Monday and reviewed and analyzed results from the certified survey. We identified problems with the current model and interest to be met with options before breaking into elementary and secondary groups. Each group developed options and identified those to share with the group as a whole for feedback. And based upon that and input from the earlier meeting today, we will work to gather feedback from families, in particular regarding two district-level options. The first is wireless Wednesdays. So on Wednesdays, students would be working independently online on learning assignments and activities. This would allow teachers time weekly to plan, grade assignments, and collaborate. There would not be any additional meetings or professional development time scheduled on Wednesdays. The other option is daily early dismissal days. Students would follow an early dismissal schedule daily and continue independent online learning activities and assignments in the afternoons. Again, this would be so that teachers have time daily to plan, grade assignments, and collaborate. And again, there would not be any additional meetings or professional development scheduled during this time. We also discussed some other site-based options, including looking at the K6 level of rerastering and sharing students among teachers within the grade level where there's teacher and parent support. Again, so that we could eliminate or minimize some of those occurrences of dual teaching modality, as well as providing some flexibility for teachers to work with their PV Connect students only joining certain portions of in-period lessons. So that way, there could be more focus on working directly with in-person students or working directly with PV Connect students, but again, less so simultaneously. As we talked about earlier this evening as well, we will continue our efforts to determine some, to develop some long-term solutions to solving the dual-modality teaching model. That concludes my COVID update and I'd be happy to answer any questions and.
Okay, first we do have a card. Melissa Schwartz.
Good evening, Dr. Welsh, President Greenberg, Governing Board Members, Cabinet, and PV Community at Home and those here in person. My name is Melissa Schwartz. I'm the current gifted chair of the PV United Parent Council and past UPC president. I've been involved in many of various committees because of my knowledge of how this district operates through my experience as UPC president and on UPC for the years prior to that. I will be the first to acknowledge, there is no way any of us, or even a dozen of us, could possibly fully represent all of our parents. With approximately 30,000 students in this district, there could be between 40 and 60,000 parents and guardians responsible for our PV students. So while we can't speak for everyone, we do work diligently during these meetings to make sure that all parent perspectives are presented and are part of the conversation, even if that is not visible in the finished product after the cabinet or board has come up with their decisions. I know that you had a long conversation during the study session this afternoon about the lack of substitute teachers. Just to reiterate some of the basic information, to make sure parents and teachers that may be listening to this board meeting, the district has approximately 485 active subs on their list. However, only approximately 16% or about 75% are willing to sub in person in the classroom due to the current COVID situation. With the number of vacancies, teachers on leave, Family Medical Leave Act, open positions, et cetera, I know the district has put permanent sub or tried to put permanent sub in each of our schools, but only have filled 30 of those positions. This leaves four to 500 teachers daily using their prep periods, covering classrooms with teachers that are out with no sub available. This is adding stress to our teachers' plate and I don't believe our parents understand that. I would encourage the board to reach out to the community, both to parents and the neighboring community partners, to see if anyone is interested and willing to sub and if so, get them started on the process as soon as possible. It typically takes about a month to get through the full application process. For those listening and interested to go, go to pvschools.net, find a job, and scroll down to the substitute teacher opportunities. Thank you for sharing the back-to-back revisions from the Arizona Department of Health Services. With the rising cases of COVID in our, COVID in our neighboring communities, it's critical that we follow these changes. I encourage the board to follow the recommendations of the Department of Education. Our families, our teachers, and staff are relying on the metrics that the board provided when opening schools. Families need to know you will stand by this decision. Our families need to trust the district to keep our kids safe and our teachers safe and our staff. How can we trust the district if they keep moving the goalpost? Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. This is item for discussion. This is, you know, there's nothing on the agenda for approval. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
I don't have a question, but I do want to say that part of what we talked about during the study session that we ran for, starting at 3:30, was the, the concept of flexibility. And I think that as, it sounds like all of us are interested in having that flexibility available to the degree to which it can be. So, you know, some of the things that we come up with might not be reasonable, might not be able to be accomplished, but we want to hear people's ideas and thoughts and we want the sites to have input into how they're going to handle things. But they have to do so with a lens toward equity as they're doing it. So we can't have 100 different options going on. But we do want to have some flexibility for our administrators, educators, and families.
Thank you. Mrs. Case.
As mentioned in our, we had a study session earlier today and we discussed many different ideas of how we can help the teachers come up with a better program, the teaching two modalities at the same time, which is physically impossible. And I would reach out to the teachers who are listening to reach out to former teachers who stopped teaching because they didn't want to teach in the classroom and see if they can help us out on PV Connect online somehow. Just sending that message out, please help us find people who are ready and capable and trained to help us online. I, one of the biggest reasons I ever ran for the school board was because of the outstanding teachers. was because of the outstanding teachers who affected my life and my children's life. I have the highest respect for teachers. And that needs to be shown to our teachers now. And I want teachers to know that they have the flexibility to do what needs to be done at their sites and to come up with helping kids across the district. If you have ideas, please, you have my permission. I'm only one member of the board, but please know the board is, I as a board member, is supporting you in being creative. These are difficult times. We need our teachers. We don't want to lose you. We don't want you to get discouraged. So I just want to summarize what we did earlier. We're trying to make things better so that we can teach our children as they need to be taught, and the teachers are so capable of doing. So thank you very much, and that's all I have to say.
Mrs. Matura?
So I am very excited by all the discussion we had today during the study session. And I am intrigued to see, you know, what the feedback is and what is possible and all of these exciting options. My question is, if we do hit our criteria and we are then moving back to online-only format, that it might be confusing that we're shifting a lot of things and then going here. And what might that look like? And that families and teachers need to be clear on what it looks like for everyone being at home versus what a flexible day might look like in person. So I just want to make sure we have clarity on that.
I think that's a great point, again, considering the timing of it. So we can certainly make sure that there's a clear understanding of the context. Again, we're talking about in the situation where we are having in-person and PV Connect as opposed to if we had to return to a PV Connect model district-wide. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. If there's no other discussion on the update, we have one other item on our agenda for discussion, and that's consideration approval of proposed new courses and revisions for the 2021-2022 high school course catalog. This is First Read, and we will turn it over to Dr. Corson.
Thank you. Good evening, President Greenberg, members of the board, Dr. Welsh, Cabinet, and guests. Tonight is the first reading of high school course recommendation additions and revisions for the 2021-2022 school year. Earlier in the school year, high school teams and departments submitted course additional revision recommendations. These recommendations were initially reviewed by our lead counselors and me. These course recommendations were brought to the APC team, a team composed of lead counselors, curriculum assistant principals from our high schools, and other department representatives. At our October meeting, each of these course recommendations and revisions were reviewed and discussed, and the team reached agreement on the following course additions and changes presented to you this evening. College Algebra Functions is a dual-enrollment course we'd like to offer to support students earning college credit. IB Math Analysis and Approaches is a new course in the International Baccalaureate Program at North Canyon High School. We're also recommending a new capstone course in the NVAA program called Music, Technology, and Exit Portfolio. This is a culminating course for students where they create a comprehensive body of original work in musical production. Our next new course is Pathways Career Internship, where students learn basic skills to perform in the workplace and participate in external internships. Our current Project Search program, where students are interning at the Mayo Clinic, is an example of this type of program. As part of our Basic Life Skills program, we're also recommending Robotics BLS, a course that introduces basic coding and robotics curriculum within a STEM approach. And finally, for our Spanish Dual Language Program at Horizon High School, we're recommending Spanish Immersion World History Geography, a required course for graduation that would be taught in Spanish for our students participating in Spanish immersion. Page flip. Our three revised courses this evening all come from the International Baccalaureate Program. The IB program reviews its courses annually and provides qualitative changes to their courses for schools implementing its program. The course descriptions for each of these courses have changed to focus more on the integration of technology into mathematics, understanding mathematics at deep conceptual levels, and investigating mathematical topics. As a reminder, this is a first reading of these additions and revisions, and I'll be bringing this back to you at our next Governing Board meeting requesting approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Thank you very much, Dr. Corson. Does anybody have any questions?
I would like to ask a question about these math classes, these IB math classes, but I'm not smart enough to, so I hope you know what you're doing because I don't know anything in the world about sophisticated math.
I am curious, what does the SL and HL mean?
They're related to the order sequence of the courses. And I don't remember the notations right off the bat, but one is like an entry-level course and one is like a second-level course.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Standard level, higher level?
Thank you.
From the high school teacher?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
I, these college algebra functions, that's beyond me. But these other ones look really exciting. I was excited with your description of them. So thank you for filling in these needs that we need. So thank you. These look great.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, Dr. Corson. I think we all are appreciative of this continuing expansion of courses for our students. That is the final item on our agenda. Our next board meeting will be in two weeks. So, Mrs. Case, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.